Ladies and gentlemen, good evening to each and every one of you. We appreciate you being here. We, the council, has just returned from closed session and we need to certify that, please.
Mr. Mayor, I'd move that we certify that we went into closed session and only discussed those items for which we went in to discuss in closed session, specifically Section 2.2-3711A3 and A7 of the Code of Virginia, nineteen fifty, as amended.
All right, sir, thank you.
Second.
All right, we have a motion made and second that we certify our closed session. Ms. Wiggins, please.
Councilman Marie.
Aye.
Councilman Freeman.
Aye.
Councilman Holloway.
Aye.
Councilman Hunt.
Aye.
Councilwoman Crawford.
Aye.
And Mayor Helsel.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of six to zero.
Thank you, Judy. And we will call this meeting to order, and if you would stand, the Vice Mayor will have our invocation and lead us in our pledge of allegiance.
Let us pray, please. Our heavenly Father, we pause to thank you for the blessings that you give to this city and for the citizens that live here. We ask that you be with this council tonight and its deliberations and that its decisions would be in the benefit of those who live here and trust us to operate and maintain this city in the direction they would have to go. We ask that you bless those serving in foreign lands and bring them home safely. We ask this in Jesus's name, amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item on our agenda, as always, is our audience for visitors. If there's anyone in our audience who would like to address council on any issue, we'd be delighted to hear from you at this time. Yes, sir. We just need your name and address, please.
My name is David Foster. I live at 213 Brownsneck Road. It gives me a great pleasure to have a chance to talk to all of you tonight. Most of the time when I come down here, it's to complain about something, and for that, I apologize. I wanted to thank each and every one of you for considering the will of the people in the removal of the mixed-use area on Brownsneck Road. I think that it was a super-appropriate action, and again, I want to thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else? Yes, ma'am.
My name is Roberta Anderson, and I live at 220 Brownsneck Road, and I also would like to second that and thank each of you individually for taking that out of the plan.
Thank you, Ms. Anderson. Thank you for taking the time to come here. We appreciate it. Anyone else? Ed?
My name is Ed Matheson. I live at 236 North Lawson Road. I also would like to echo the sentiments of the previous two speakers and say that I appreciate the fact that this council was listening to the people and the many folks that came up and spoke before council and were able to re-craft the comprehensive plan to align it with the survey results, which I think really speaks to a true democratic process where ideas are debated, discussed, and finally, the best decision comes out. So, I commend the council, Mayor Helsel, for your leadership and everyone involved. So, I think the direction that you've taken is the right one, and I believe it lines right up with the population's will. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Ed. Appreciate it. Anybody else? Okay, let's move on then to the approval of our minutes. We have two sessions. If we could take those individually, please.
May I make a motion to approve the regular session date of September the fourteenth, two thousand and nine?
Okay. I think we have a motion made and second that we adopt a regular session minutes from September the fourteenth, two thousand and nine. Are there additions, corrections, or any questions? If not, Judy, please.
Councilwoman Crawford.
Aye.
Councilman Hunt.
Aye.
Councilman Holloway.
Stand.
Councilman Freeman.
Aye.
Councilman Marie.
Aye.
And Mayor Helsel.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of five to zero with one abstention.
Thank you, Judy. And the work session, please.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the minutes of the city council, excuse me, the work session of, city council work session of September fourteenth, as amended.
Okay.
Second.
All right, we have a motion made and second that we adopt the work session minutes as well as amended. Are there questions or concerns regarding those? If not, Judy, please.
Councilman Holloway.
Aye.
Councilman Freeman.
Aye.
Councilman Marie.
Aye.
Councilwoman Crawford.
Aye.
Councilman Hunt.
Aye.
And Mayor Helsel.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of six to zero.
Okay, thank you, Judy. Let's move on to new business. The first item is the With Creek Road expansion plan. Randy?
Mr. Mayor, here, I'm asking for direction from the council. Upon my arrival, I have been working to advance both of the two significant, big-ticket transportation issues that have been on the minds of this council for some time, and one of those is the With Creek Road expansion. As the council may be aware, but those watching at home may not, that project, as presently scoped by VDOT, is estimated approximately fifteen million dollars. I'm suspect of that number, and we've asked to have it updated. I expect it to actually go north, based on that concept. There's been approximately five million dollars that have been allocated to date, and given the prospect of state funding availability, in my view, it is unlikely that significant new money will come our way based on the traditional funding sources. And further, I think there is a risk that it may be reprioritized away by others as they cobble together partially-funded projects to fund things that are in a more ready state to advance. So, I am here asking for your guidance on whether or not the council still wishes, as its preferred alternative, and I understand this was really, has been something that VDOT has pushed strongly in the past, the five-laning from approximately the Villas down to the bridge at Hampton and across, whether or not you would consider some other less impactful, and by that, I mean narrower, alternative. Once I have your direction on this, I plan to continue my efforts, working with Hampton and York and the Commonwealth Transportation Board and others, to really look at every possible means to get this improvement done. I'm glad to report that we've gotten some good success. I've had a good meeting with the city manager of Hampton. He, in fact, is visiting us tomorrow with his engineering team to continue that discussion. And later in the day, which may be a first for the city, the county administrator of York and the city manager of Hampton, both on the same day for different meetings, both to talk about With Creek tomorrow. He will be here as well. And a final thought, Bill, I'll talk more about it later, but our CTB member, who represents this district, Aubrey Lane, we've extended an invitation to him to join us, and I believe he will intend to join us the evening of October twenty-sixth. So, we are beginning to build that coalition. Now, what I need is some real direction from the council on exactly what aspect and design that you would like me to move forward as your preferred alternative.
And the real issue there, Randy, in my opinion, is, number one, I appreciate the fact that you've gotten in touch with those people, that you took the initial step to get those folks involved in the conversation, but I also am concerned regarding the six-year plan and where we may end up. If we go the way of the regional planning, you know, we just, without any representation, we're just not going to get it. That's my feeling. And the NPO and the CTB are revising all of those projects. We talk about the Hampton Roads Bridge, and almost, it's not even on the list. So, the main thing is to get not only the regional transportation issues on the list, but Pecosin needs to be on the list. And I defer to council as to what you want to tell Randy about the five-lane, three-lane that we've discussed many, many times, but that's a real possibility if we don't get some assistance pretty quickly of being out of not only the six-year plan, but probably the eighteen-year plan.
Well, I guess, Randy, I'll kind of speak first and kind of throw in my two cents' worth here. This has been on my mind for, shoot, the entire time I've been on council, the entire time I've lived on With Creek Road. I can tell you right now that the city of Pecosin never needed five lanes to Hampton. That's, it's very easy. We've been kind of stonewalled by, this is the standard development type, this is the standard road plan, this is what we in VDOT build. And quite honestly, going across that expanse of marsh is extremely expensive, and we seem to be making continuous improvements, like the new sewer line that's being in place and a replacement of the existing sewer line that has no forward planning in sight. I would say, and I think probably the consensus of most members here, is that three lanes is necessary. We need something that is improved upon what we want. And I don't care if that's three lanes to Hampton and then going to two, because there's no turning movements in the marsh unless you just really want to go that way. But, you know, I would say that there's a much more workable, downsized plan that Virginia could afford that would help Langley and NASA with their transportation plan to make sure that they don't ever arrive on a base closure list, and that works for the city of Pecosin and for the city of Hampton at a much reduced cost. The only thing I would throw on there is that I do believe that bike paths would work in this application and that the bike paths should be part of that plan, because I believe a lot of the NASA and Langley traffic would probably use them from time to time. And that calculation should be done by VDOT as far as, okay, here's your population, here's how many work at this central location, and because of that, this size road is enough. I think the environmental impact would be a whole lot less, and I think, like I said, they could afford to do that. I don't think they can afford, ever, in the next ten, twenty years, to do five lanes across that marsh, and that's my two cents' worth.
Well said, Gene.
And, Brandy, I echo the three-lane idea. Not only is, I think, it a waste of money to go to five lanes, but quite frankly, I don't think the people generally who live along there, the people of Pecosin, want to see it be expanded to five lanes, because as we've had members come up and talk to us, that is one of our entrance to the city, and it does more maintain the small-town feel when you've got a three-lane, but when you get to a five-lane, it takes it away. I think we need the center-turning lane like we have elsewhere, just so people can get in and out much better, and I echo the idea of having a sidewalk on at least one side of the road going up. And I can tell you, having ridden my bike across that causeway many times commuting down to the shipyard both ways, that was one of the most treacherous areas riding, because there's no place to go, really. There's, it was a very narrow road, so anything that does come in, a bike path would greatly help, and that is one of the central ways and one of the best ways to ride a bike throughout this area, and it's very, a bikeway through the marsh along the side of the road would be good. So, but three lanes.
I guess I got a little different thought. Certainly, I don't think that we need five lanes going south. What I do think we need to look at is the elevation of that highway on the Hampton side, because in an emergency, that is one of two exits out of the city, and, you know, on a full-moon tide now, that road is almost saturated. And it looks like to me, and certainly, I'm not doing the engineering work on this, but because of the sensitivity of that area being wetlands and marsh, it just appears that we could probably, as Gene said, if we go to a bridge in lieu of trying to go in and disturb that marsh, you know, bridges don't cost a lot, lot more, if any, than roads do by the time you put bases in and everything. You know, that raised causeway coming across that marsh area, landing somewhere at the higher elevation on the other side would be adequate, but my fear is, just what you said earlier, that because we don't have a plan in place, that the money that's been allocated is going to be reallocated to some other project that's more readily, you know, or ready to go now. I mean, five million dollars, if there's five million dollars there, I can tell you somebody's got their eye on it, and it does, you know, going from a five-lane to a three-lane would make a considerable difference in the amount of money, because we have most of the right-of-way up With Creek. Not all of it, but some. And, you know, I think, once we get to the bridge, Hampton has all the right-of-ways that they need, because if you look, their poles and everything has been set for the continuation of that road. So, you know, it's really that area that reduces there in front of the lunar lander and brings us into the city for Hampton, and then from the Villas south to the bridge. And we could correct the problem with York County, the access problem, coming into With Creek now, because that is, I travel that in the morning, and sometimes I see the congestion and backup coming from the county into that. So, they have a vested interest in trying to, you know, get that resolved also. So, it's certainly a lot of subject there for you guys to cover, you know, and I hope that y'all will, you know, maybe come to some, that we can go to the state highway and say, hey, look, you know, we really need to keep whatever money's been budgeted available. You know, I would not object if Hampton needed the money to do their part of the project, you know, because that is the, I think that's the critical path to getting it resolved, is to get that area on the other side. At least then, in an emergency situation, we could use that to get to the main interstate exits, so.
I can agree with everybody, too. I think three lanes and a bike path, sidewalk, whatever you want to call it, is a good idea, and I applaud you also for working with Hampton and York County, because it is, it does affect them, where the, you know, where the central location, but Kerry Chapel Road, where it comes in, and then Hampton, it's important to be working with them. So, thank you for that.
So, we're headed for the three-lane and the elevation of that road.
Absolutely, and I appreciate the comments.
Any other comments, Kerry?
No.
My goal is to build a coalition of voices to allow us to get this project done.
Good for you. And we'll be right there when you turn around. Okay, let's move on, if we could, to item number two. It's an ordinance making additional appropriations and transfers for fiscal year two thousand and ten. Randy?
Mr. Mayor, the memorandum was fairly self-explanatory. I'm here to answer questions primarily. I would note a couple of things, though, things that we've talked about previously, like making some traffic and directional improvements at Mesa Point. You'll see that here. Also, funding request to finish out the automated system for building inspections that we had been working on for years, and we were within, I, you know, we could see the finish line, but eighteen hundred dollars was keeping us from finishing, so that's here as well. I realize, and like you, I don't like to spend money in the mid-year unless I have to, but we have made a considerable investment in time and in some resources to get that close, and I think we need to finish it. And Ms. Owens is here, if you have questions for her or myself.
Any questions to the manager or Theresa? Kerry?
I just had one on the second page. You're talking about a survey.
Where was that?
Please remind me which of the surveys that was. It was either, I think it was Langford Lane.
Okay.
Langford Lane.
Okay, any other questions? Somebody have an order?
I'll make a motion that we adopt the ordinance making additional appropriations and transfers for fiscal year two thousand and nine, two thousand and ten.
All right. Second. All right, we have a motion made and second we adopt the ordinance. Any other comments, questions? If not, Judy, please.
Councilman Hunt.
Aye.
Councilwoman Crawford.
Aye.
Councilman Marie.
Aye.
Councilman Freeman.
Aye.
Councilman Holloway.
Aye.
Mayor Helsel.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of six to zero.
Thank you, Judy. Let's move on to item three. It's a resolution making an appointment to the Peninsula Agency on Aging. Anyone have a motion prepared with a name to insert, Tom?
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion, we approve a resolution making appointment to the Peninsula Agency on Aging in the name of Marilyn Kuhn, the term to expire September thirtieth, two thousand and twelve.
All right, we have a motion made and second that we adopt the resolution with that name inserted.
And I would just like to add that I thank her for offering to continue on in the position. I know she'll continue to do a very good job, and it's impressive that she had the letter of recommendation.
Okay, any other comments? All right, we have a motion made and second, Ms. Wiggins, please.
Councilman Hunt.
Aye.
Councilwoman Crawford.
Aye.
Councilman Marie.
Aye.
Councilman Freeman.
Aye.
Councilman Holloway.
Aye.
Mayor Helsel.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of six to zero.
Thank you, Judy. Let's move on to item four. It's a resolution making an alternate appointment to the Hampton Roads Transportation Planning Organization. Randy?
Mr. Mayor, this is just a formalization of an item that you discussed at a previous meeting. In order for Ms. Crawford to be the formal alternative designee for the city, you need a official council action to appoint her.
Also move, we do that.
Okay, second. We have a motion made and second that we adopt the resolution, and Tracy, I appreciate you agreeing to back me up. Okay, Judy, please.
Councilman Marie.
Aye.
Councilman Freeman.
Aye.
Councilman Holloway.
Aye.
Councilman Hunt.
Aye.
Councilwoman Crawford.
Do I vote yes for this or abstain?
Sure.
Okay.
Mayor Helsel.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of six to zero.
All right, thank you, Judy. Item five is a resolution reaffirming participation in the Peninsula Alcohol Safety Action Program. Randy?
Mr. Mayor, this is a, an additional housekeeping item. You had previously, as a council, approved this. At the time, the resolution draft that we had received omitted a section, and so we have brought that into conformance with what they need to do, and respectfully ask you to readopt it with that inclusion.
All right, sir. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Okay.
Second.
Motion made and second that we adopt the resolution. Any other comments, concerns, any questions? Okay, Judy, please.
Councilwoman Crawford.
Aye.
Councilman Hunt.
Aye.
Councilman Holloway.
Aye.
Councilman Freeman.
Aye.
Councilman Marie.
Aye.
Mayor Helsel.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of six to zero.
Okay, thank you, Judy, and would ask council if they would add the count plan adoption as item six under new business before we entertain that?
So moved.
Okay? Second. We have a motion made and second that we add the count plan adoption to our agenda. Judy, please.
Councilwoman Crawford.
Aye.
Councilman Hunt.
Aye.
Councilman Holloway.
Aye.
Councilman Freeman.
Aye.
Councilman Marie.
Aye.
And Mayor Helsel.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of six to zero.
Okay, is there then a motion to adopt the plan?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move we adopt the comprehensive plan as discussed in the work session.
Second. All right, we have a motion made and second that we adopt the count plan. Any concerns, comments? If not, Judy, please.
Councilman Hunt.
Aye.
Councilwoman Crawford.
Aye.
Councilman Marie.
Aye.
Councilman Freeman.
Aye.
Councilman Holloway.
Aye.
And Mayor Helsel.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, the motion carried by a vote of six to zero.
Okay, thank you, Judy. Randy?
Mr. Mayor, I just have three items for the attention of the council and for the community, but first, it's just a reminder, this coming weekend, on October the third, will be the next hazardous household chemical collection. It will be from eight AM to twelve noon at the Pecosin Municipal Building. This is a really important program that we have. Everything that we satisfactorily and appropriately move through this program, whether it be household maintenance, automotive supplies, lawn and garden, something doesn't end up in our watershed and doesn't end up in our landfill in a way that, York County's landfill, in a way that's bad for that. So, we encourage everyone to take advantage of that. I would note to you that our efforts on revenue recovery continue. Councilman Hunt, you'll see at your place the second version. We thank you for the suggestion. Citizens will be receiving later this week a second mailing, revenue recovery, which really takes the form of what were the frequently asked questions that we were asked in the first four meetings that we had in the community, and you'll find those answers there. And lastly, attached to the manager's report is a draft work session scheduled, which I offer for your consideration and direction. This is an effort to help us manage your expectations for work sessions. What you see there are suggested work sessions. You will find the work suggestions made by council in the last couple of meetings incorporated, individual members of council, along with staff. One revision to the one that was with the manager's report is we have now heard that our CTB member, Aubrey Lane, will be with us on the twenty-sixth, and as such, if you are generally supportive of this schedule, I might suggest that we move Mesa Point to the ninth, so as to not inhibit conversation with our CTB member. Also, I would ask whether or not the council is desirous to move forward in a joint work session with the school board. If you are, certainly, I would be pleased to issue an invitation on your behalf on any of your regular council meeting nights. Alternatively, superintendent and I met and discussed the prospect of a Wednesday, if that would be something the council would consider, or even a Friday before a football game, not knowing exactly how many members of council went to a football game, but we might be able to meet together. And if we do do that, one suggestion that we had is that we have that meeting at off-site location, perhaps the middle school, as that is the most significant of our capital improvements program projects, might be a good time to talk and to have a tour of that facility together. So, I weigh your direction on the calendar generally?
Is that the purpose of what school board wants to get together and talk about capital improvements?
That is part of it. I think the superintendent and I have talked about discussing how we started the year in terms of numbers of students and the changes that they've had to make because of it, discuss their plans for dealing with the current year state shortfalls. I imagine we wouldn't meet this time of year without at least some discussion of next year's budget, but it's designed, at least the superintendent and I have discussed it, as something more than simply a budget discussion, really a time to begin the year talking about economic performance last year and those things that are impacting it this year.
Okay. I think it'd be really good if we could meet with the school board. We unfortunately weren't able to last year due to the course of events. I think a dialogue with them would be good, find out what their thoughts are. I know that we're down, at least I heard we were down a few weeks ago, about sixty students over what we had in last year's enrollment, and I know there's great concerns with the budget coming up, because the state, in cutting the budget, is going to have to be cutting K through twelve. We don't know how or the details yet, unless you've heard something recently, but I think it'd be good for us to have a dialogue with the school board.
I have no problem with that.
Generally, I think Friday night's not a good meeting night. Just generally.
I would say, unless we're all going to the football game together, then, you know, I would delay that. Certainly, we want to meet with them. I just wanted to know exactly what the purpose was and know that. Thanks.
Yeah, I'm not necessarily big on a Friday afternoon or Friday night, but if council wants to do that, it's okay. I'll be there for that.
Local football game, I'll be there with the band.
Midweek, I mean, yeah, I can support whatever, but I would prefer, you know, midweek with a couple of hours to talk.
That'd be fine.
Is it okay with everybody?
Yes.
Midweek, a couple hours.
Be that, Randy?
Okay, and I'm interpreting midweek as a Wednesday.
Yeah.
And we'll do it late enough so that you don't have to sprint to get back here, but early enough that people that want to come and be part of that and bring their kids don't have to have them out past normal kid time. I will take care of that. Thank you very much.
Okay, anything else?
No, sir.
Okay, before we ask for council comments, I've got a couple of comments that I need to make on behalf of council. There's been a, to the general public, there's been a flurry of emails and phone calls over the past couple of weeks dealing with the Marina project that most everybody in this city is familiar with now. Just to let the public know, and council already is aware of this, so is the city attorney, that all of those emails have returned those, to those folks by phone call to discuss the city's side of the project and the developer's side of the project as well. I'm going to read for public record a statement the council saw earlier in the day. This council is on board with the statement, as is the manager, as is our city attorney, with the statement, as is the manager, as is our city attorney. And I talked with Brad Brown this afternoon and read this, what I'm about to read to him. He had no problems whatsoever with it. We have some issues at the Marina and, from a personal standpoint, one being certainly the pollution nightmare that we have there currently, and the fact that it is in a dilapidated condition, and it's an eyesore, in my view, on this community. So, with that, let me read this statement. It will be in the record. Anybody that wants a copy of this record, excuse me, of this statement from the city, we're happy to provide that to you. Members of council, as you're aware, the city recently received notice from Brad Brown of the intent of Pecosa Marina Associates LLC to terminate its contract of development with the city of Pecosa. I was very disappointed, as his council, to receive this notice over two years after the development agreement was executed on the basis that the developer had concluded that they would not be able to satisfy their obligations as a developer under Section 13 N of the contract, such that the project can be developed as contemplated in the contract. For over two years, this council has stood ready to honor its contractual commitment, and we remain so to this day. Before a final decision is made regarding the termination of the contract, it is my hope that the city will have the opportunity to explore with Mr. Brown possible revisions to the approved contract for development that would allow Pecosa Marina Associates to move forward with a first-class project. To this end, I would request the support of council to direct the city manager to enter into discussions with Pecosa Marina Associates regarding this issue and report back to city council within 90 days. But we would, Randy, we would certainly like a response sooner than that, if you can make that happen. Again, all parties are aware of this, what I've just read. I'm very comfortable with it. Council's very comfortable with it. Mr. Brown was very comfortable with it. And so, Randy, if we could ask you now to move on that as quickly as you can, we would appreciate that. Any comments from council before we just kind of go down the dais, as we usually do, just regarding what we've done tonight? Tom?
Yes, I'd like to say that if you go back and look at the record, I did vote against the particular plan that came up. But I do, and I always have, supported putting a restaurant in, upgrading the Marina. That definitely needed to be done. My sticking point always was the higher density aspect. And I'm hopeful that something could be done with the higher density aspect, because that was my only problem with it in the past, because that area really does need to be developed along the lines. As you pointed out, Mr. Mayor, it is, it does need work. And I am hopeful that we will be able to come to some agreement here and some accord that meets all of our needs.
Okay, thank you, sir. Kerry?
No, I'm good.
Okay. Tracy, any comments?
I just, I wanted to agree with, or to second what you said, Mr. Mayor. I think it was well said. And I do want to say that I don't think that we could be better represented than Randy and Wayne on this. So, they have my full confidence, and I'm sure they'll do their best.
Okay, thank you, Jean.
Mr. Mayor, I appreciate your leadership in this regard. Randy, I look forward to your direct negotiations. I'll make it no secret that I have supported the Marina Project. But all you need to do is drive down there and take a look, and you'll understand why and understand the implications for the city from a couple of regards. And it was interesting tonight, as big a fear, as big a fear as this city has over growth, that tonight in the audience for visitors, one of the first things we said is we're struggling to keep our schools alive. We're minus another 60 off of another, off of the previous 10 years' continued downward spiral. I'm starting to really think that we are about to give up the main reason we are a city. If the schools cannot continue to compete, if we all want to live in houses that no one can afford until later in life, and they don't bring children here, then we won't have schools. So, unless we start doing something different as a city, and as a city, and that includes all the people, better start listening to the numbers and looking at the real trends instead of the fear. Because fear is put out by those who don't want change, but facts speak for themselves. Another 60 students we've lost, almost 200 in three years. Think about it. That's all I've got, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Thanks.
A couple of things. I, too, have been on record of supporting the Marina Project. And I can tell everyone that I was disappointed when we received a letter from Mr. Brown. Selfishly, it is an environmental nightmare for the Chesapeake Bay. And I chair that committee at state level. And I have an opportunity to look at those things throughout the bay that I think are affecting the habitat and the rivers that surround our city. The Marina Project not only meant cleaning up that mess, but it also meant a revenue boost for this city. If you look at the potential worth of that Marina Project and what it would have done for our tax base here, you don't have to be a Rhodes Scholar to see that it would have enhanced our revenue considerably. They are selfish reasons on my part, but I, too, if I was a resident in the Rens Road area, I certainly would like to see that area cleaned up. You know, it's probably not on the list of the worst environmental sites in the United States, but it's got a rank right up there in the top for the state of Virginia. And I don't think it's certainly to this city's credit to have that exist here. And this was an opportunity for someone to come in from the outside, put his money up with very little revenue expected from the city, or sacrifices that taxpayers were going to make to see this happen. But with that said, I am certainly hoping that Randy can work through these areas that are causing such problems for the developers that have property. I guess the second thing, Mr. Mayor, is I see Messick Point is probably visited by more people, more people from outside of this city than any one place that I can imagine. You only got to go there on a Saturday morning to see the parking lots full to capacity and people parking in the green area that we have now set aside. My concern is we, in good faith, have gone there and invested money for the use of those people, the watermen that use that, along with the recreational people who use it to launch their boats. Some points, at some times, the point is in a state of disrepair because people doing things that they shouldn't be doing there, using the parking area as stowage areas. Last week, I happened to go into the parking area there, and we have provided a dumpster for people to come in and put their trash in. And there was a sofa, a washing machine, and something else sitting by the dumpster. I don't know what we can do about that, Randy. I guess the thing that I want to do is, I feel like that someone from the city on a daily basis should take a ride to Messick Point. And if we see those things setting out, I'm not looking to try to catch the individuals that are doing it, but I'm looking for the city to keep the area policed as much as we can, with the number of people that we have frequenting our city and coming using Messick Point. You know, I don't want us to contribute to the untidiness of that area. And I know each one of you have gone the extra mile to try to make sure that that facility has been a first-class facility. And now I see things happening there that's putting it in a state of disrepair. You know, people doing things that they shouldn't be doing. But I think we're obligated as a city to go in and set the rules and to enforce those rules. That is city property, and it belongs to every taxpayer in this city. And no one has a right to go in there and take special privileges. So, with that said, I'm going to get off my soapbox. But I get very passionate about that because we worked so hard and so long to find the money to do that. And now it just seems to be stagnated. That's all I have.
That's well said, Binks. And, you know, we all have a lot of pride in Messick Point. And those kinds of actions are certainly demeaning, not only to the city, but it should be a slap in the face to every citizen that lives here. One other addition to the Marina Project, and I've been on record as well as supporting the Marina Project, but I think that those folks who have really not been very vocal regarding the project are now becoming vocal. But they've done it very tactfully, and they've done it very kindly. And so, for any of those that are watching tonight, we need to say thank you for that. I think it needs to be said that we're going to get development on Rens Road. It's absolutely coming. And it's, you know, this council can determine whether that is an inferior development or whether it's something that we can be proud of for years and years to come, and something that the community can use. I'm struck by the developer wanting to not gate that community, but rather leave that community open to the general public in terms of walking and running. And if anyone needs a new boat ramp, we certainly need it. Our dock is getting in disrepair. I'm not so sure, Randy, that that's even safe now for folks to be on, to be perfectly honest with you. So, our move tonight is to move forward. We intend to make our discussions as open as we possibly can. Randy, we will look to you to kind of spearhead these negotiations and keep in contact with us so that we know where you are and what's going on with it. So, with that said, anything else, Tom?
Welcome back, Binks.
Thank you.
Kerry?
Nothing else. Thought you presented very well.
Okay. Tracy, anything?
I needed to extend just thanks to pretty much everybody here tonight. I've been, this is my first time with a comp plan, and I had a lot of questions and received a lot of help from just about everybody in this room who works for the city in one way or another. So, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Jean?
I guess the other thing, other than Marina, Randy, I was kind of disappointed in your highlights about the Peninsula Health Department not coming to the city every other Wednesday. I mean, the third Wednesday of every month. Is there a reduced schedule or just no schedule?
No schedule, is I understand.
I think it's just because during this flu epidemic, and then they plan to resume that. I think that was their reasoning.
Just during the?
Just during the pandemic flu session right now.
Because they're extremely busy in other locations, or because I would have thought that would have been one of the services that they brought to the city, was the flu shot.
She did say that she was hoping that they would come back, but they can't date them whatsoever.
Okay.
Councilman Hunt, would you like me to send a letter expressing the city's concern to the director of health about that?
Yes, I would.
Take care of it.
Because I would have, and I guess for those that didn't hear, I guess it's the overwork of the health department, and I do understand that, I really do, in that, you know, they're expecting a lot of people to come to the health department. But this is basically a service that protects other things as well as our elderly and our underprivileged count on this service to get that flu shot that they're going to be given at their main office. So, I would just like to see us talk to them about that.
I'll take care of it. I do believe as far as flu shots go, Pecosa Pharmacy, Dave Creasy, has a sign out giving the times and all when they are doing flu shots right now.
Yeah, the health department ones are for those that can't afford. So, I just want to make sure that that's.
And I think Dave has come and talked to us before, and I believe they do give them out for free also, procedures.
Well, I'd like to add to that. I'm sure that in this city with the Kiwanis, I know that I belong to, and some other community volunteers, if there's somebody in the city who can't get to the health department to get a flu shot, I'm sure we could find them a ride to get there. So, if that actually is somebody out there who's listening, if you called the city, we can get you a ride to get a flu shot somewhere. So.
That's not the point.
Okay. Right, right, absolutely.
The point is that this is a state service that basically, you know, we pay for and that we have enjoyed. And I just want to see if there's any way that they can continue it. That's it.
I'll do what I can.
Thank you.
I think the letter probably needs to be more stringent than a quest. You know, look, we're part of this region, we're part of this organization, and we want to be treated like the others.
I will draft an assertive letter. Followed immediately by an assertive phone call, and if necessary, an assertive visit.
We don't, certainly don't want to, you know.
No, I think, you know, I think we do that service quite fine. And it was well said, Jean.
Thanks.
Anything else, ma'am?
No, I'm good.
Okay. Motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Two of them at a time. Tracy, I'm sorry. Did you want a second? You made a motion. Kerry, second it. I'm not going to ask any questions.
Aye.
Judy, please.
Councilman Hunt.
Aye.
Councilwoman Crawford.
Aye.
Councilman Marie.
Aye.
Councilman Freeman.
Aye.
Councilman Holloway.
Aye.
And Mayor Halsel.
Aye.
Motion carried by a vote of six to zero.
Thank you, ma'am. And we are adjourned.